Start off with the pledge of allegiance. Those at the HQ, can you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have approval of the agenda? Chair would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Is there?
I'm moved.
Moved as a seconded? It's in second by Commissioner Tiofak. Any discussion? Commissioner Kenny?
Uh, yes, um, the current agenda for the special meeting I received. And I don't know if this was when it was generally posted at three fifty-three AM this morning on August ninth, twenty twenty-two. And it changes item number seven to union contract discussion and vote from union contract discussion. As it had been yesterday, August eighth at four oh four PM. So I do think we need to talk about that notice, how it affects the special meeting? And whether we're able to take action on that item or not when we get to that in the, in the, in the meeting. Thanks.
All right, the, it was posted to the public uh before seven o'clock last night. There was a problem with the uh novice, because I recall talking to executive assistant Melissa, is that right?
Sure, I can explain. So um the meeting was noticed on our website in the public uh notice section of our website. At um after, right after we received a notification from our attorney. And that was at approximately four thirty-five o'clock uh yesterday evening. And then it was posted and it was also noticed to the um to the media. There was a, an issue. I have a long string of Granicus emails stemming from yesterday early. Uh notice notifying us of an outage uh that did not allow me to update the physical agenda on the website. Um or the actual agenda packet that only affected my minutes. And uh the way that I could compile the webs, the um packet to send back out to the board. So I waited until I got a notification and that was at um the time just fifteen minutes before I sent out that email this morning. Note uh and I updated it and compiled the packet and sent it back out. So everything public facing um had been posted prior to twenty-four hours.
Okay, moving on to item four. New commissioner oath of office. Executive assistant Melissa, is that? You're gonna do that for?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Farinoff, do you have the um oath in front of you?
I do.
Fantastic. Will you raise your right hand, please?
Uh, uh, Chair and Melissa, I'm sorry, I just didn't write down that the agenda was approved. I apologize. I thought there was discussion. Was it? Motion second and approval. So thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there any further discussion on the agenda? None apparent. Let's go ahead and approve. Those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed by the same? All right, I motion approved and agenda approved. And now we'll go on to this item four. Thank you, Chief Hovis.
You're welcome. Team, it's team effort here. So thanks, uh, all three of us, four of us noticed that. So thank you.
Mr. Farinoff, you are ready to go. Thank you so very much. Please repeat after me. I, Michael Farinoff.
I, Michael Farinoff.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially.
I swear to faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of this office.
Perform the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the State of Washington and the United States of America.
Maintain the Constitution of the State of Washington and the United States of America.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, now you're a full-fledged commissioner.
All right.
I just wanted to say something. I really happy you're, you're get on board with your knowledge about the fire service. And other knowledge, I think you will make a huge contribution to our board.
Thank you, Commissioner. I really appreciate that. Thanks to everybody who uh voted in my favor. I appreciate it. Hopefully I won't let you down.
Thank you. All right, item five, public comment. Do we have anybody? Is anybody on the attendees?
Give me just a second to verify if a gentleman named Peter. Did you make it online? Or, oh, here we go.
I see a phone number.
I do see. Okay, I see one. There it is. Okay. Peter, are you there?
Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, okay.
Welcome to the public comment period and you will have three minutes.
Okay, in a nutshell, um, I think the compensation package that's being uh voted on this evening is overly generous. I think the taxpayers um are actually getting kind of the short end of the stick. I look at my property tax bill and the amount of money that is goes to South County Fire. And then a supplemental line item on there on my tax bill for another thing for the fire department. It's, it's out of line. And then if I should need an ambulance, I'll still get sent a bill, even though I've spent a thousand dollars. Plus in taxes to the fire department. And I count up the number of houses in my development and then we just kind of go on and on. And then we're talking tens of millions of dollars. Um with the increased assessments and such, it's, it's way too generous. I look at the different, it's not just strictly a paycheck that they're getting. It's the paycheck and then the benefits, the time off from work, the sick leave, the medical benefits, the savings accounts. The match of the 401K plans and the other matching benefits. You know, unfortunately, I don't have the exact copy of the contract. But as a taxpayer, this is wrong. Okay? And I think the commissioners, we need to really reexamine this and not vote on this. It needs to be a no vote, in my opinion. Thank you for letting me express my opinion here. That's all.
Thank you, Peter.
Chair, I think for the point of order, uh, we'd like to, Peter uh should be saying his address and the, his full name for public comments. So would they wait, later on, we get contact that person?
He has requested to remain anonymous, except for his first name, and he is permitted to do so.
Okay, but you're, anyway, you can't contact him?
I'm more than happy to come. Have I been cut off now?
No.
No, you have not.
Okay, um, I'm more than happy to meet with any of you. I, I really feel that Zoom isolates people from actually coming to these meetings. And we really need to look at um opening up your meetings to the public. Um, I look at other government agencies, they're open, they're dealing with the public one-on-one. So like to see that happen, please.
Commissioner Chan, you start your hand up. Do you have anything further?
No, I, I'm just make sure that we have, if we can some contact information, we can, you know, if we come over something, yeah.
Come to the, this is there, your producer can speak to you.
All right, Melissa, you have his contact information if we need to reach out to him any further?
I do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, for your, thank you, your comments.
Uh huh, bye-bye.
Bye. Anybody, any of our other attendees wish to make a public comment, please just go ahead and raise your hand and we can elevate you. All right, I'm not seeing anything. We will move into executive session for collective bargaining pursuant to RCW four two one, four two dot three zero dot one four zero. Item four, and we'll start off with uh fifteen minutes. And we'll extend as necessary with the uh potential of voting afterwards.
Place the webinar on record. Um, at seven fourteen, we went into an executive session for fifteen minutes. At, uh, we were extended for fifteen minutes at seven twenty-nine, extended for fifteen minutes at seven forty-four. And we will either come out or uh extend again at seven fifty-nine. Pat, let me know if you have anybody who can't um hear that. And I'll probably come back in just to make sure that everyone can hear next time.
Thank you, Melissa. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yep.
The executive session has been extended by five minutes. The executive session has been extended by an additional five minutes.
All right, on to item seven. Vote. The chair would like to entertain a motion to accept the negotiated union contract. Vice Chair Roland, so moved?
So moved.
Is there a second? Chair or Commissioner Lawrence, seconds. Is there a discussion? Commissioner Kenny?
Oh, uh, thank you. And just um so that we're uh clear, I'm take, I take it the motion is to accept the uh collective bargaining agreement with, approve the collective bargaining agreement with the IFF Local eighteen twenty-eight for the time period, January one, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
I just want to be, be sure we're, we do have multiple co- uh, union contracts and this is a, this is a big one. Uh, I wanted to uh make comment and say that this is a, um, I, I'm in favor of it. It's a, uh, it's a good contract. Uh, and I think that um it is um, uh, provides uh benefits uh both for management and for uh labor. Uh, a- as to uh one of the questions that was uh actually brought up earlier in the meeting from a person named Peter. Don't know who Peter is, but he makes a good point, which is uh, he mentioned that he didn't have a copy of the contract. Uh, and that is one of my criticisms uh tonight is that if you look in our packet, there's no copy of the contract. The contract is uh fifty-six pages long with appendices and it's probably the most important uh document, uh, contract that the, the board's gonna sign off on in the last few years. And probably the most important one for the next few years also. Uh, certainly one of the most important. And um the value of this contract is probably between two hundred million and a quarter of a billion dollars over that five years. So it's a really big deal. Uh, but there's no copy of the contract for the public to see. Uh, I suggested to the chair that, that that be provided in the public packet so that people could see it. Uh, that did not happen. I think that's unfortunate because people like Peter uh don't have an opportunity to see it and the public should see it uh before we take action. That being said, it is a good contract. My guess is it's gonna pass unanimously tonight. Uh, and so while I appreciate that people, people like Peter would like to see that and, and, you know, should be able to see it. It's not gonna make a functional difference as to whether this passes or not. And, and I think there is nothing to hide here, that in fact, the contract is good for uh South County Fire, for the board and for uh uh for the people of South County Fire. And I wanted to talk a little bit about why. Um, the contract from the, from my board perspective, solves some issues uh that have been ongoing for some time, including it resolves the seventy-two hour shift issue. Uh, it resolves a peak activity unit issue uh where the South County Fire will now be able to have five peak activity units, which over time makes a real difference because consistently we find statistically that the majority of our calls during the day from eight AM to eight PM. So this allows us to focus, just like a private business would, focus our resources on the times of day when we have the most need. So to, it's an issue that we've been pursuing at the board level for many years, uh, and this is a real positive uh for um, for the board uh to resolve that. And finally, it's a five-year contract, which is unusual in the realm of uh fire uh union fire contracts. Uh, and five years is, is I think a good thing for South County and South County Fire Board of Commissioners and the public. Uh, this will run, it's actually backdated. The people should know it's backdated to twenty twenty-one. So it runs twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. So five years. And I think that is going to be good for um the people of South County Fire. It's gonna be good for the board and I hope it's also good for the union. And that's why they overwhelmingly approved it. So there are lots of other issues that uh, that are very positive. Of course, in a negotiation, you don't get everything you want and you have to negotiate. And so, you know, there are maybe some things in here that I'm not as excited about, but at the end of the day, it's the, it's a push-pull. It's uh positives and negatives, but you take it all together and you look at this and go, this is a positive. This is a positive for South County Fire. It's a positive for the people of South County Fire. And so um I'm in favor of it. I encourage everybody else on the board to vote for it. Uh, I think it is um, uh, it's really helpful for us at this time, a kind of a time of uncertainty, of economic uncertainty, to have the certainty of this contract. Uh, and I think it will be good, uh, good. And I, and I hope people like Peter who are interested uh will have a chance to review this uh at some point, that we're gonna make this public as soon as possible. Will have a chance to look at this and I, I, you know, will agree with me that this is a positive thing. There's nothing to hide here. This is all public. This is the public's business and these are public tax dollars. But uh this is a, this is a positive story. This is a positive conversation. And I think it's a real, I think it's a real win-win uh win for, for management, for the union and for the people. Uh, and so um, so uh I, I think, uh, you know, a conversation another time with Peter or other people that review the contract. Maybe there'll be differences of, of mine, but I, 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 I think there is a great story to tell here. I'm very pleased with it. Uh, and I want to thank um Chief Hovis and his staff who've put in many hours on behalf of management negotiating this, also our attorney, Dan Swedlow. Um, it's been a lot of time. Uh, and this, this ends on a really positive note and I'm just very pleased with that. And so uh I wanted to express my um thanks to them for the good work uh and encourage a yes vote on the uh, on the CBA. Thank you.
Commissioner Chan, you have your hand up?
Yes, yeah, I, I kind of echo. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Peter Falcons. Uh, you know, make the comment. Uh, again, I, I'm a, I'm a finance guy. We are looking at uncertainty or inflation, everything else, and there's a cap in, in those increase. So uh who know, I mean, nobody knows where the inflation go, but that, that for us is safety in there. And I, if you have watching us, uh, me and Commissioner Kenny for a long time. Uh, this board had been in the last few contract, we have a lot of things we went over to arbitration. We just don't count a rubber stamping on, on, on this contract. Uh, this particular, I also, all the points that Commissioner Kenny had moved that have been, you know, uh, the union has been really, be really cooperative in a lot of thing and so I will again, well, yes, uh, on this. But I hope you go back to look at the history. This is not a rubber stamping board for negotiations.
Thank you, Commissioner Chan. Commissioner Lawrence, you have your hand up?
Yes, um, I would like to say that um I agree a hundred percent with um Commissioner Kenny's comments. Um, I was probably gonna say exactly the same thing, but as you know, I probably would have, but he beat me to it, but I agree with him. Said it, uh, very articulate statement and the, I agree a hundred percent.
Thank you. Commissioner Roland, Vice Chair Roland.
So being uh one of the uh, the newer members of the board, I know I'm not the rookie anymore. Uh, we've got um Commissioner Farinoff in. Uh, but um, you know, I, I rely a lot on the experience of our, our seasoned commissioners. Uh, and uh, one of the remarks I made, uh, remember the old TV commercial, Mikey Likes It? Uh, one of our uh executive board meetings, I, I hope I'm not talking out of turn, but at the end, I'm like, uh, Commissioner Kenny likes it. He really likes it. And that's a, that's a, that's a high hurdle to hit. Um, so I wanna uh both commend, uh, um, you know, the commissioners that have brought that experience to bear. Um, you know, if there's a fiscal conservative wing, I, I think that they've always been looking out for, for, for the taxpayers and the fact that they are comfortable with the compromises that were reached, um, that, that plays a lot into my decision tonight. I want to thank the uh, the, the union uh for, you know, I know there's been rough negotiations in the past before I've been on. Uh, it seems like this one is a, a step in the right direction. And that's uh, you know, not due in, in a small part to uh, to their participation and their willingness to, to compromise on some issues as well. So I want to thank them as well as uh Chief Hovis and uh Chief, uh Assistant Chief, so Taylor and all of the, the, the assistant chiefs and everyone that's been involved in this. Uh, because um, um, you know, they've, they've brought their years of experience to bear in this and helped brought a, bring a good deal to the taxpayers and a good deal out of the firefighters as well. So thank you.
Chief Hovis?
Just before we move off of this topic, commissioners, I, I just want to set it up for unfinished business, item nine A. Mr. Peter Falcons is a presenter with Chief Eastman on the update for the Hilltop Fire Station. I believe Peter of uh unknown last name is in the other side. Just called in on the phone, so I just wanted to make sure that clear. So thank you, Commissioner Chan. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Chief Hovis. And yes, I'm looking forward to voting for this. Um, Commissioner Kenny, I have a quick question for you. With your nineteen years of experience, has the collective bargaining agreement ever been posted with the packet to the public?
Yes.
Oh, interesting. Okay, thank you. That wasn't, it's new information. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of the CBA agreement negotiated as it stands for the next several years, please raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed by the same? Looks like it passes unanimously. Congratulations. And now we're on to the union report.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, wanted to uh obviously glad uh the decision was for approval of that. Uh, we greatly appreciate it. I'm definitely honored to be here tonight on behalf of the three hundred and twenty-plus members that we represent. And uh, happy to say that uh this package obviously is gonna be um much needed. And uh, it's gonna provide some good support and uh as uh Commissioner Kenny had mentioned, you know, provides a little bit of uh security to going into the future with some uncertainty in the economy. And so uh we are greatly appreciative of that. Um, I do want to echo that uh, you know, there was definitely some uh, some compromise, obviously on both sides. And I agree that I think this is definitely a positive uh, a contract for both parties on this. Um, there was definitely a give and take. And uh, I know our members are definitely very happy with it. Um, as Commissioner Kenny had mentioned, we had a high percentage. Um, it was well over ninety percent of our membership and we had about a ninety percent uh turnout. So um, pretty historic for us, obviously historic for you guys as well, having a unanimous vote on this contract tonight. Um, we definitely appreciate your guys' support and uh support that you gave to the staff and your attorney to uh work with us to come to this agreement. Um, I understand the public's concern, uh, the comment that was made. Um, I just hope, uh, you know, they realize this was not a, this is, there's kind of a process to determine it is, right? There's a uh comparables, we have ten comparables that were decided in the last uh CB or the last arbitration. And we took a look at those, right? And so we are right in the median of those. We're not above for anything like that right now. We're below. And uh, we're right in the median. So um, I hope they recognize that, that we're not trying to do anything unfair and I agree, we're not trying to hide anything here. So um, and I would say that both parties on this, I felt like throughout the negotiations was very transparent on both sides. And moving forward and trying to get to a fair deal that was uh, you know, good for both sides and also good for the public. So uh commissioners, I just want to thank you very much and look forward to our uh, you know, working together and moving forward. Uh, it's nice to know that we do have the security going in for the next few years, uh, at least to the end of twenty twenty-five. So thank you guys very much um for uh your support tonight.
Thank you, Pat.
Yep. And also, if you allow me, Daniels, uh, Commissioner Daniels, I would just like to say, uh, welcome. Commissioner, and I apologize if I say it wrong. Farinoff, I believe is how it's pronounced, but I apologize. Uh, welcome. And uh, also just want to recognize that tomorrow too, I know uh the last meeting was brought up about the firefighter in Spokane that died. Tomorrow is the uh uh funeral, the line of duty death funeral for him. And so just be keeping the, that department, Spokane Valley and their family and your thoughts. And uh, just remind commissioners, hopefully you guys can make it on Friday. At uh nine thirty, we have the retirement ceremony for a large number of our members, first retirement ceremony. Um, since uh the pandemic started, so hope to see you there. And thank you again for your support.
Thank you. Any commissioners have any questions for VP Moore? All right, you're out the hood, Pat. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on to unfinished business, item nine A. Deputy Chief Eastman.
Thank you, Chair Daniels and, and uh, Commission. Um, the agenda bill is on page three of your packet. Um, and really what we want to do is, is kind of give you an update of where we were, where we're at with um property acquisition in Station Twenty-Two. Um, I do have Peter um here to um answer any questions that I can't answer. Um, and I want to thank him for being on because I know he's on holiday um up in, up in Canada um for this meeting. So um, I think we talked, um, the last time we talked about this topic um was to get some parameters from the board. Um, on acquiring the property um for the replacement of Station Twenty-Two. Um, Peter has since done that work for us. Um, did a letter of intent, um, got a counter to the letter of intent. Um, come, came to an agree, agreed upon dollar amount, um, that's within the parameters that the board set. Um, went on to um draft up a purchase and sale agreement um for the property. Um, which was in, in consult or consultation with uh Rich Davis, our legal. Um, and um, we submitted, um, the seller wanted one change. He wanted sixty days um after we um did our ninety-day feasibility versus thirty. Um, and, and honestly, that works just fine for us and, and we made that amendment. Um, Chief Hovis has signed it. My understanding is the seller has signed it. Um, and we're moving forward with feasibility and the rest of the due diligence that the RFA needs to do uh before the board um takes final action um to either purchase or not purchase the property. Um, and the reason we're coming to you tonight is, is as you recall in the previous discussion. Um, um, we talked about the, the earnest money, um, a dollar amount of fifty thousand dollars um in the purchase-sale agreement that has to be submitted and deposited by the nineteenth of August. Um, and we're talking to Chief Hovis um about where we were. Um, decisions made to make sure that we um had this conversation with the board to let you know what staff was doing. Um, and um, so we're doing that. And it's important to remember that um the earnest money is, is if the board still requires board action for to um not be reimbursed, right? So if the board chooses within ninety days to not purchase the property, that earnest money comes back to the RFA. Um, and um, I guess I'll say this again because it's really important, is in the purchase um sale agreement, it's very clear in there. Um, that one of the things that have to be met is the board has to affirm at a board meeting to purchase the property um as a condition of the purchase-sale agreement. So um um, so we want to let you know about the earnest money um that will be deposited um honor before the nineteenth of August. Um, and then staff's gonna go do their work in conjunction with um Peter. And then anticipate, um, I haven't done the math in my head and I'm, I'm not very good at it tonight, is we'll come back to you, um, give you a brief on what we have found. Um, and then um at that, and have discussion. And then at that and have discussion and then we would bring it back at a subsequent meeting for the board to either take affirmative action to purchase or not at that time. So with that, I'll ask Peter, do you have anything to add first?
Well, can you hear me?
Yep, we're fine.
If anyone is interested in the the purchase price, the purchase price agreed upon was three million one hundred thousand. The asking price was three million six. Our initial offer was two million eight and we went back and forth settling on three million one, we had authority to go up to three million two. So the in the next ninety days, we intend to do the full due diligence. Soils, Geotech, title review. I don't think a wetland study is necessary, but we'll make sure of that. And we do a regulatory review with the with the the planners, the Snowmush County planners to make sure that there's no problem with a fire station in that location. And and you know, the the property does not have a lot of mystery to it. It's it's relatively flat. It it does not appear to be wet. And it is it has good opportunities to plan the site so that there's some buffering from the neighbors. So if we decide to go to a public meeting, I think we have some good things to talk about. And you know, we have a willing seller and there was no discussion about you know, having to condemn property. So that's a good thing.
Thank you, Peter. And I guess with that, is there any questions of the board? And if there is not, we will be executing the payment deposit for the earnest money and we'll be coming back to you at a time in the future to discuss what we have done, what the feasibility showed and then a recommendation from staff for whether we recommend that we move forward with the purchase or not.
Thank you, Chief Eastman. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Chair Daniels.
Commissioner Kenny, yes.
Can I make a comment for Chief? Chief Eastman, and for Mr. Daniels also. Great work. That's outstanding to get that. And Peter, thanks for the update on kind of the back and forth there. But I don't know if I should say say the name of the owner here on the on the call, but I'll just say thank you to the owner for being being willing to work with us. Because this will allow us to build a public safety facility that is going to benefit the community in that area for decades to come, in my opinion. And so I think it's a real a real plus and the the site location for our needs to be able to go north and south, east and west, have that flexibility in that area is outstanding. And so the site is, I hope the fees I'm getting, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit. I'm I'm just crossing my fingers right now that the feasibility study works out well, but you know, everything I've seen on paper. It's looking good and it's very much appreciated that the owner was willing to work with us because it'll be there'll be a a monument to to their decision on working with us on this in a cooperative way with that fire station for many years to come in, it'll benefit the community. So Peter, again, thank you and Chief Eastman, thank you. Good work.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioners? All right, thank you. We'll go on to item nine B, Volunteer Firefighter Support Position Resolution. Chief Hovis, as I recall from our conversations, you didn't see any significant red flags with Commissioner Roland joining the volunteer firefighter program, correct?
Yeah, based on the conversation that I had with the Vice Chair, appreciated having that conversation, give you a little bit of a history of where Fire District One was as well as South County Fire. And also you were accurate in your interpretation of the RCW and those things that legal also concurred with. So I have no, I have no issue with it. I'm certainly not going to be able to vote on this resolution. But I have no issue with it at all. So thank you.
With that, the Chair would like to entertain a motion for the resolution to allow a sitting Commissioner to also be a volunteer firefighter where it's truly voluntary, collect no pay. Is there a motion? Commissioner Kenny, so moved? Is there a second? Commissioner Chan, thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Chan? You're on mute.
I really appreciate Commissioner Roland's interest in the volunteer firefighter program. In the past, all fire commissioner have been really supporting the volunteer program. And I hope that Commissioner Commissioner Roland could get more insight about the program, how it works and then so we can really get more support to the volunteer firefighter program.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Lawrence?
Yeah, I concur with Commissioner Chan on that, those sentiments.
Thank you. Chief Hovis, were you going to talk about the program at the next meeting in a week?
Still in the works. I know when HR Director Hollenbeck gets back, it's the intent to give the update on where we're at with the recruitment that Vice Chair Roland was part of, give an update on that. And then I've talked to a few Commissioners about where I'd like to see the program potentially go in more of a pipeline method to some post-secondary education facilities. I just don't know. Well, I know for a fact I probably won't get there next week because I've got some meetings set up with those institutions. So we will certainly give an update on the current program and the recruitment where we're at. So.
Okay, thank you.
If that's satisfactory to the board, thank you.
It is. Thank you. All right. Any other Commissioner comments? Let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by the same? Motion passes. Nine C, Fourth of July fireworks analysis with AC Fitzgerald and Community Outreach Manager Shaunery and Public Information Officer Leslie.
Good evening, Commissioners. As you know, we promised to bring back an analysis of the Fourth of July as far as the incidents of fireworks and not only the discharge, the fires, the injuries, but also the complaints that we've received as well as to identify some strategies moving forward. So the Community Outreach Team, beginning with Shaunery Guzman, has a maybe a ten or fifteen minute presentation, just to summarize for you kind of what we experienced over the Fourth of July. And we'll start with Shaunery Guzman.
All right, thank you so much. We're working on the screen sharing. Lori's getting that connected for me. But while we're waiting for that, I will share with you that in all essence, we did have another successful year. Whereas we didn't have any significant fires or injuries to report, we had no structure fires. So no one lost their home as a result to fireworks being lit off. So that was a good, that's the good. But we still have a lot of room for improvement. And so that's what we're going to talk about here now. So let's see, there we go. Let me get to my screen. All right. So on July fifth, we shared with you this graphic. We made a small change to the graphic because we had realized that we double counted one of our injuries. So the total calls related to fireworks was fifteen. All the injuries were minor, no transports to the hospital. All the fires were minor to brush or vegetation. It was a bad year for porta potties. We had three porta potty fires and a dumpster fire. And I believe in all three or all four of those fires juveniles were involved. So they're getting access to fireworks in other ways because we know that juveniles cannot purchase them at firework stands. So they're getting them from their adult caregivers. So based on what we learned in twenty twenty one, we took that information and we increased our messaging and how we were putting ourselves out to the community so that they could better understand the difference between the ban on the sales, a ban on the discharge of fireworks and the fact that sales were still permitted and that was beyond our control. And we tried to create a document and an FAQ that would answer all the questions for anybody in the community that would ask. And so the FAQ we created here at South County Fire, but we shared with our partners that share our borders, that Surfer and Bottle Fire, as well as other agencies throughout Snowmush County that wanted similar messaging. And then the Snowmush County Fire Marshal's Office. We worked closely.
Just sorry to interrupt. We're seeing on our, at least in the Zoom, the share, kind of the presenter view. So the, yeah. If you want presenter view there, now we can actually read it. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you for letting me know. So the FAQ was very helpful because one of the things we heard from our residents this in twenty twenty one is that they kind of got a run around when they were trying to get questions answered. So we wanted that first call to get the answer that they needed. We also worked with the Snowmush County Fire Marshal's Office to post signs of the map that you see here on eleven by fourteen card stock, and that was required to be at the check stand of all of the fireworks stands throughout Snowmush County. We'll also be talking a little bit later in the presentation about the number of fireworks stands that we see increasing in our service area. And that will be part of the ask of some of the recommendations that we have that Chief Fitzgerald will be talking about a little bit later. All in all, I think with all of the distribution of the educational information, our upgrade to our website information, social media messaging, media reports and our yard signs as well as our HOA kits. I think we got the word out there pretty good. Thirteen HOAs signed up for our kits. So we think that was a great way to get information out, especially in those high discharge areas in the Silver Furs community as well as in the Lake Stream area. All right, I'm going to pass this on to Leslie for the next few slides.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. As we did in twenty twenty one, we once again heard from many residents of our service area with questions, complaints and inquiries. And of the seventy three contacts we received in South County Fire, by far, the most common question we received was why are fireworks being sold in the area where their use is banned? And complaints about this and the lack of enforcement accounted accounted for most of the complaints that we heard. And that was also true for Snowmush County Fire Marshal's Office and the County Council. So that that's the biggest issue we heard. You know, it's confusing for people that sales are still being allowed in an area where fireworks use is banned and the lack of enforcement. So next slide. And our social media engagement related to fireworks remained high. And especially on Facebook and Nextdoor. And one difference I noticed on Nextdoor is that the comments were much more civil this year than what we saw last year. And I think that's because the ban took some people by surprise last year and they expressed their anger in words that weren't so neighborly. So this year, we didn't, we didn't see as much of that, mostly comments and frustration about the sales and the lack of enforcement. But we also, along with that, did receive thanks from people for the ban. So we can go to the next slide. And our partners at Snowmush nine one one noted that calls were down this year to both the emergency and non-emergency line. And about forty percent of those calls originated in our service area. So we can go to the next slide. So success and frustration. So success, as Shaunery noted, you know, we continue to see a decrease in incident volumes over previous years. We didn't have any structure fires. We didn't have any significant injuries, but we do hear from our residents about confusion, frustration and anger related to sales that continue in the area where their use is banned. The lack of enforcement, responding and the support and no consequences for stand owners that are not following the rules. So those are are some of the things that we're hearing. So with that, I'll turn it over to Assistant Chief Fitzgerald.
Thanks, Leslie. Commissioners, anecdotally, I can tell you that there were a lot of fireworks being discharged in Southwest Snowmush County. Talking to the folks who were discharging, they looked at me like I was crazy to say that they couldn't discharge their fireworks in their own neighborhood, telling me that they had purchased their fireworks just down the street at a neighborhood retail fireworks stand. So it truly is an astonishment when you talk to people and you explain to them, it's not, it's not allowed, it's not legal to actually discharge them when in fact they're buying them on the street corner. The map on your left is included in your packet. This is from our GIS coordinator, Steve Wheeler, who created this map based off of snow nine one one data, which is countywide data. This shows just the Fourth of July on the left as your packet does. And on the right is a period, a three week period before and after July fourth, and you can see the prevalence of fireworks. Much greater density of fireworks discharged. You know, when you account for the pre Fourth of July and the post Fourth of July. Interestingly, at last week's or during last week's Commissioner meeting, I was out at National Night Out with most of the rest of the Community Outreach Team. There was a firework that was discharged inside of a building that came in as a structure fire for South County Fire just near our headquarters. So the incidents of fireworks continues outside of just Independence Day. Next slide, please. And so all of this taken into account has caused us, along with comments that have been made by the Commission in the past, to develop some recommendations for your consideration. Certainly lobbying County Council to ban fireworks sales countywide. But but in particular, the within the area where there's a fireworks discharge ban in place only makes sense. Enforcement funding is important both for the County Sheriff and for the County Fire Marshal's Office, also important for the Prosecutor's Office. They have to have a close relationship with the Sheriff's Office to prosecute any citations that are presented to them. We have asked already that the County Fire Marshal become more involved and thankfully they were, as mentioned a short bit ago with the required maps and the required messaging that's at the fireworks stand. They were very helpful to work with us. And we would like County Council to provide more funding and direction to the County Fire Marshal as well. And certainly to increase staffing and enforcement and and giving direction to the County Sheriff. What we hope will be the will of County Council. Next slide, please. And so here are the suggested steps. We worked with our consultant Liz Loomis to develop the suggested timeline. We would ask for the Commission's consideration of our recommendations here. Certainly to get your approval, get the Commission's approval to send a letter to County Council. We have that letter drafted, it's been vetted and and you know, whenever the the Chair is willing to receive that, we'll pass that along. The identifying the stakeholders, we certainly have identified very many stakeholders already, both professional groups and residents as well. And then asking for a meeting of of a pseudo public safety committee, whatever County Council has, I don't think they technically have a public safety committee, but working with the the County Council members to identify the best group that we should come and talk with and meet with as South County Fire. And then ultimately scheduling a meeting with County Council, hopefully a hearing where And then ultimately scheduling a meeting with County Council, hopefully a hearing where they can hear from members of the community as well. Ultimately, talking with council members, understanding their position. And if we get that hearing, invite all the necessary stakeholders and then following up to those council members and stakeholders. And speaking of stakeholders, next slide, please, is a list of the stakeholders that we've preliminarily identified to help us in this effort. Should the commission be favorable to our recommendations? Certainly the County Fire Prevention Association, County Fire Chiefs Association, our own labor group, Local eighteen twenty eight, individual community members and residents. And by the way, we have a growing list of people who are very frustrated and, and some of them outright angry about what's going on in their community regarding fireworks. The Puget Sound Clean Air Agency and other pollution, pollution bodies, whether those are water quality or air quality and paws and lost dogs in Snohomish County, as well as area school districts are really ready to engage in further grassroots efforts to provide additional regulation and restriction on fireworks. Next slide, please. And so this is what we feel we have heard from our community is that when they voted to say, we don't want fireworks, that meant they don't want fireworks. And, and technically, County Council was correct that the, the advisory ballot in two thousand and nineteen that went out on the general election was asking about discharge. And so that's what ultimately was adopted. But we certainly didn't feel, those of us who went to County Council at that time, that a ban on the discharge of fireworks in this area would mean that people would continue to sell fireworks. We didn't think that that would actually happen. But in fact, that, that's what's happening and, and not just continuing to sell, but increasing in sales from eleven fireworks stands last year to fourteen this year. So the number of retailers are actually increasing in the area of the ban. So Commissioners, that's our recommendation, our ask of you, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Vice Chair Roland, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of echo some of the observations. I know in my neighborhood, I would say fireworks were, were down. But it was still going on a lot. And I walked outside, just talked to my neighbors, tried to understand what was going on. And I can echo a lot of the, the information just given. I, there's a, there's a particular group down the street that every year is lighting fireworks off directly in the street and interfering with traffic. And I've had to drive past there and it can be like a little war zone sometimes. And I, I personally witnessed the, the, one of the sheriff's office vehicles drive down there, do a circle, not say a word to anybody and just drive off as I tried to wave them down, just to at least let them know that, I mean, there was, there was a hazard of traffic even. So I, I do hope that they take it more seriously in the future. You know, full disclosure, as a private citizen, I love the fireworks. I love sitting out on my, my, my roof and watching them go off in the entire area. Though the things that I've learned now and, and my role as a fire commissioner, I definitely do support the ban. And I want to see it be, you know, something that, that is effective. So I, I definitely would agree with all of the, the things proposed here in, in strategies to deal with it. And I would really urge both the sheriff's office and, and the County Council to take action and to make sure that this, this actually has teeth. Otherwise, you know, why do it in the first place?
Thank you. Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes. I asked, I think the last time we talked about fireworks, if the people that were complaining about the sale, did we direct them, as we said we would, to, we're, well, we're at a place to blame for that, the County Council? Did we do that?
I'm seeing head nods. Yes, yes, Commissioner, we did. And in fact, that was what was discussed is the, the very first contact, we wanted to provide definitive direction to callers and, and visitors to our website. It directed people directly to send an email or make a phone call to the County Council. We know in fact that that did occur. We were passed along the written comments and complaints that actually made it to County Council as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Chan, you have your hand up?
Yes. First of all, I just want to say the staff did a wonderful job getting our data. Chief Fitzgerald, those are the, a lot of those are objective, right? It's not what record to bag it up and everything else, right?
It's certainly objective, but what was the second part of your question? I'm sorry.
That, that means some data that, that yes, we did talk to certain people and, and that type of thing that to be there, right? Okay.
Yes, sir. And in fact, we had prepositioned Snohomish County nine one one to, to the questions that we would be asking of them. They actually built their database to accommodate our requests, knowing what they were a month or so before the Fourth of July. So they were pretty quick to get all the information back to us, just as requested.
Okay, so as someone that have been dealing with these issues since I got, I got on Commissioner and I think he, I, I think that's what I suggest of the board do. We send, we said basically a brief kind of letter or even, and with this report and just send it to them pretty quickly. And just let them sink in. And then we probably want to organize ourselves. Probably go into a council meeting, probably late September, when everybody get back from vacations and everything else. But we'll have to go before the budget time when they're not very busy. So we can organize with the other, the partner that we have and show up in there and give a some, it, it, we cannot be be nicely saying that we give them some praise that they pass the law anyway. They did have the ban. And the effect of that, we did reducing a lot of fireworks. They want to go one step further. And so that a meeting is important, especially with all the other, the partner, the, the animal lover and other body environment and all of them. It was really effective. I don't mind being a phase again, or someone else can go up there and a commissioner with a staff, appropriate hovess, chief hovess or whoever, I think Fitzgerald probably a good one, but other one too. And, and, and to them. And then we probably starting in probably next year, about January, February, we really start to get more pressure on that, go up to the meeting. But I'm also that we should arrange in the meeting with the sheriff and explaining our difficulty in there. And, and, and put some pressure on the sheriff, on the enforcement part of it. So that's, that's my thought to put in action.
Thank you, Commissioner Chan. Commissioner Lawrence?
Some other commissioner may, may agree or whatever.
I think Commissioner, our, Mike Todd was first there.
Oh, on my list, I see him after you.
Okay, oh, there's the, all right. So do we have Chief Fitzgerald, do we have all the data? I mean, the information, contact list of people that were complaining about the, the not being a ban on sales? Do we have that, that data?
Yes.
So, okay, thank you. So for the rest of the commission, they might, especially the lawyers among us, would what if the board and the, the service, South County? When, to go along, I'm tagging along with Commissioner Chan's suggestion about that we, we, we go, we go in front of the board again. And, I mean, the County Council and, but we send out a mailer or contact by phone or text or whatever, email that for all the people that were concerned about that, and we just go up there and a couple thousand people and, you know, that might get their attention. So I don't know. I mean, I think we need to take the gloves off on this. I mean, does the county do anything for us really? You know, I mean, I had to deal with that fire marshal guy and I wasn't impressed. He's not even, had nothing to do with fire. It's like some building inspector, something in his past. They, they just don't have any interest in doing anything in kind of the right direction there. Except for maybe at the top at emergency management, that's a little different. Then that thrown in that, but the fire, the County Fire Marshal and the whole works up there. I think we need to take gloves off.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. Mr. Todd?
Yeah, thank you. I'm late to the party here, so I don't know all the past history, but it seems to me that doing the whole county may be tough. And so I'm not, I'm wondering why we're not just talking maybe selfishly about Southwest urban growth area, which is encompasses all of South County Fire. That is where the density is the problem. If they want to set these off in Darrington, I don't really have a, I don't have a dog in that, that particular fight. I think we might be more successful if we focused in on what's of concern to us. And I, I feel for our partners at Surfer, for instance, who kind of span both and they've got issues. But at some point, I think we need success in this. So I would ask if we at least think about that as a strategy. I respect Liz Loomis and crew immensely. She's very, very good. But I would suggest we think about that as, as item one. I'll pause there. I've got a second comment. But I'll pause there. Am I off base in bringing that up? Is that something you've already discussed?
No, except that we, we do, it isn't the whole county. We, we did focus on a certain high-density area.
Okay.
Am I correcting that?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
But I think is the difference between whether it's the UGA or the Southwest UGA. I'm proposing the Southwest UGA is it gets away from the Monroe's and Lake Stevens that are inside the urban growth area, but they're not contiguous to our Southwest area. That is kind of a finer point.
That, that's certainly our target is Southwest urban growth area, South, Southwest Snohomish County urban growth area. The, the Suuga is the area we're talking about as far as asking council to enact a ban. I think the, the comment about countywide was to say, I'm sorry, to enact a ban on sales, but the comment in the slideshow was about enacting a, a ban on sales anywhere there's a ban on discharge. In other words, don't sell fireworks where you can't legally discharge them. That, that was really the ask.
Exactly, yeah. My second comment is it happened exactly. Mill Creek, we've had a ban on white fireworks that we just take for granted. Looking at our code, it's nineteen ninety-five is the last time we seen touched it. So we've kind of assumed that's the case. But we've always had, oh, gosh, they come in from other places. But really, the war zone was just east, out towards Gold Creek Church and Silver, Silver Lake, et cetera. Or, yeah, Silver Lake area, or excuse me, the Silver Furs area. And just to our north, it's amazing, right by Lowe's, there's a great big fire space, fire stand, fireworks stand. And while I picked up the signs that said fireworks stand this direction, because they're not allowed in Mill Creek, that didn't stop them from selling any. So I find it also crazy, and I think many of our residents in Mill Creek thought it was crazy to sell them right across the street. People don't know where the city boundaries are. They don't know where the county boundaries are. They don't know this stuff. So it, I, I'm in support of that. I'm going to propose that one of the partners you should look at is the cities themselves in here. I'm going to throw Mill Creek to the wind here. That I don't know if our council will, will have an appetite for this, but Mill Creek got to be a partner. We ought to go back. We've got to go back and look at our code and make sure it's really clear about sale and discharge. There's some things in here that nineteen ninety-five, certain kinds of legal fireworks versus illegal fireworks and all kinds of other things. Maybe the cities also need to make a stand. Maybe that'd be helpful in terms of getting county council members to listen, because those county council members have the same constituents as the city council members have. So it's just a thought that might be useful to have your cities be counted as partners in this effort to go and campaign with the County Council. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Commissioner Chan?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Todd, yeah, you're right. And let me give you a quick history. Basically, when we went up the, because five council member, two or three of them is representing, they have been long time to be, don't want to do any account. We know that. So the, the final thing with the crack for us is Mr. Dungy basically suggested this called no fire zone. Each individual really confusing and we compromise. That's opening. And then we get into, get into this, just our sub-county fire, because that's our jurisdiction. The one, the reason we gave to them is that all the city lower in here, all, all banned. So what happened is these people go to unincorporated era, unincorporated area to, to do that. So it's, I, I, Commissioner Lawrence, I understand that you got to be angry and all this stuff. But sometime, just angry and yelling doesn't really work. Lastly, God, remember we, every, every, every year bring out this ugly pictures, hands blow up and all this stuff and doing all this stuff. It, it is amazing that we finally get it done. So I would suggest that on the report, when we send it to them, we basically go up there, I don't want to point a finger, but just kind of report because appropriate. This is the report that we got from the fire bank and, and not, you know, demanding right away, but then slowly. And then we, we start in January. That is, that's when we, I think there's a new council member. You actually, somebody remind me, is that a?
They're on the same audio cycle.
The, okay, so, but the sheriff is a, is a sheriff for this year too? Uh, next year? Okay. All right. So anyway, but, but the new sheriff, they can pick this up as another, you know, in, in, in their, in the campaigning. So so that's, that's my kind of a, you, you got to balance a dance. That, that's what I'm trying to say. Carrot and the stick.
Thank you, Commissioner Chan. Commissioner Lawrence?
Yeah, Commissioner Chan, I wasn't suggesting that we go up there and angrily scream at them, just to have a large presence, because they can count heads and votes and you know, might make an impact. So I never raised my voice, you know that.
No, when you say take off your glove, so I don't know what it means.
Well, exert whatever power you can, but it, you know, I'm not a leftist, you know, or, you know, type or whatever, you know, I know I'm very, be very calm at all times.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. Chief Hovess?
I just wanted to thank staff before I forget for the presentation. And I just wanted to mention, Commissioner Chan said who has changed on commission. You talked about a council member for county that supported this measure that's no longer on that the County Council that has been replaced by Sam Low is also a council member. Mead is a new council member that resides in the city of Mill Creek and would certainly be supportive of this. Council member Wright is still a member of council that was very supportive of this for District Three. And council member Dunn that represents Muckelteo Everett, a small portion of the unincorporated, maybe closer to one of our newer commissioners, as well as the Tulalip Tribe is also supportive of this. And a very good point was brought up, cities can do things with code that we do not, we do not have control of. So there may be a good opportunity to, with Chief Fitzgerald, the team, the support of the commissioners to educate some newer council members that I am certain that the cities that they represent would be supportive of this because nineteen eighty-five was a while ago. As Liaison Todd mentioned, so I just wanted to mention that. And again, thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, staff that presented.
Any other Commissioners have comments?
I'd like to echo Chief Hovess and say thank you, staff, for the presentation. It was very thorough and detailed. I also believe that Mr. Todd's suggestion about partnering with the cities and updating their municipal code would be the optimal path for most success in the short amount of time. So with that, since we're done with this item, I'm going to move.
Wait, wait, wait. Should we, do I need to make a motion that we do that?
Discussion only. Discussion only. Discussion only.
Okay, can you put it on agenda next? No, I understand.
The packet, it says discussion only.
Okay, can we, can you put it on, on, on the agenda next week? So we can make a, make a motion to the, to the, to the action plan?
To do what?
To, what we, that send a letter to the council with the reports and everything else in there. I, I, I just don't want to go forget and bow it and then we'll wake up in, in, in May and June and say, oh, let's do that. Let's have a, have a plan. I, I, if you, it would be great if you can put it on gender about the, the plan, so we can at least, you know, have some kind of plan for action.
Assistant Chief Fitzgerald?
Yes, thanks, Chair Daniels. And, and to echo Commissioner Chan's comments, staff was prepared to take a palpable measure of, of tonight's discussion. I think we got that. And we'd certainly be glad to forward a letter for your consideration. uh, we'd certainly, uh, be glad to forward a letter for your consideration, uh, Chair Daniels. And then, um, uh, staff will continue to move forward on this. Uh, we certainly feel the direction of the, of the commission.
So.
I'm, uh, taking a note here to add that to the next agenda.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm old fashioned and I write things down. Um, thank you for that. We are, before we move into item D, we're going to take a ten minute break. And so I'm showing that it is almost just nine oh nine. So we will come back, um, at nine twenty. So eleven minute breaks. We'll come back at nine twenty to, uh, resume our meeting. About five minute. I'm sure you can talk as fast as the, uh, Micro Machines guy from nineteen eighty-three.
You're dating us.
All right. Do we have all the commissioners back? See Commissioner Kenny, Commissioner Lawrence. See Commissioner Chan, see Commissioner Tio Flack. I heard from Roland. How about Commissioner Fairnhoff? Hey, there we are. Man on the move. You're on mute. And Mr. Todd, thank you. Looks like we have everybody back. We will commence, continue on with the unfinished business and go on to item D, presentation of the twenty twenty-three expenditure forecast and status quo budget from Chief Hovis and CFO Bothwell.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm going to share a PowerPoint here. Uh, Melissa, can you let me share, please?
Even given permission at the beginning of the meeting, but.
Uh, looks like I can now. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So this is the presentation of the twenty twenty-three budget expenditure forecast. Uh, this forecast is a complement to the revenue forecast that was presented to you back in July. Uh, the reason we're bringing these forecasts to you, uh, while we're working on the chief's preliminary budget is just to share some of the insights that we have as we put that budget together and provide some background. So when the chief's preliminary budget is released, um, you'll have a pretty good understanding of what's in there and some of the conditions that are affecting that budget. So a few notes about this forecast, uh, it is a look at the trends affecting the twenty twenty-three budget. The forecast is based on the levels of service established by the twenty twenty-two budget. So there are no enhancements in this budget or in this forecast, uh, and no one-time items. And some of this data is preliminary, uh, so it may change and we will refine it as we go on. If there's any significant changes to the actual data compared to what we're going to show you tonight, um, we'll definitely make sure that you're aware of those changes. So for the purposes of reporting, uh, we've separated the operating expenditures into fourteen expenditure categories. Uh, six of those fourteen categories make up nearly ninety-five percent of operating expenditures. Uh, they're listed here from largest to smallest. You can see that the first, the large, the three largest are employee costs, so salaries, benefits and overtime. Uh, and the smaller ones that, that round out the ninety-five percent are professional services, repairs and maintenance and supplies and small equipment. So I'll start with the employee costs. Uh, salaries are forecasted to increase by five point six million dollars. Uh, there's three pieces to that. The first one is the cost of living adjustment or COLA, uh, for represented, uh, employees. And that's an inflationary adjustment and the cost of that adjustment is about four million dollars in twenty twenty-three. Uh, the second piece is other contract elements. So these are some of the premiums and enhancements that were in that contract. Uh, the cost of those for twenty twenty-three is one point three million dollars. And then the third piece is the cost of living adjustment for non-represented employees. Again, this is a inflationary adjustment. And the cost of that one is three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, overtime is also expected to increase by about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Overtime usage is not expected to increase, uh, compared to twenty twenty-two. But as a result of the increase in salaries and, and the rates associated with that, uh, the overall cost of overtime is expected to increase by about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the last, uh, category within the employee cost section is employer paid benefits. Um, the employer paid benefits are expected to increase by one point four or five million in twenty twenty-three. Um, there's two pieces to that. The first one is the benefits with a direct relationship to salaries. So these are benefits that are calculated as a percentage of salaries. Uh, those are expected to increase just because salaries are going to increase, uh, by that inflationary percentage. And the cost of that increase is approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the second piece is healthcare. Um, so these are healthcare benefits provided to, uh, employees. And the RFA is self-insured for healthcare. So the, uh, self-insurance model uh, assumes an eight percent increase in the cost to provide that benefit, uh, every year. And the cost of that increase is approximately six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, so moving to the other, the last three of the ninety-five percent is professional services. Uh, we're forecasting no change due to a number of factors. Uh, repairs and maintenance is forecasted to increase by just under three percent. And the cost of that adjustment is seventy thousand dollars. And then supplies and small equipment is forecasted to increase by about three hundred thousand dollars. So these items altogether are approximately three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, so the total increase based on what I just showed you is just a little under eight million dollars for twenty twenty-three. Uh, I separated that out by kind of the budget decisions. And so the cost associated with the labor contract, uh, is seven point one six million dollars of that eight million or just under eight million. Uh, and then the eight hundred and ten thousand that's left is considered discretionary and that includes the cost of living increase for non-represented employees. Uh, and then the, uh, repairs and maintenance that I just shared with you and the supplies and small equipment increases, uh, that were on the last slide. I'm going to hand it over to Chief Isa Taylor to tell you a little bit about the asset replacement forecast and then I'll come back at the end with next steps.
Thanks, Chris. Good evening, board. Um, so in twenty twenty-three, we were looking at, uh, what we discussed back in June, which was updating our replacement schedule for our fire apparatus. So this would include engines and, uh, ladder truck. Uh, uh, we thank the board for the budget amendment, um, which was kind of the phase one of the update schedule. Um, for the refurbishment of, uh, of an engine this year. Um, I'm happy to report that that engine got stripped down and put, uh, on a low boy semi truck and should be in Nevada now, um, so the work can begin on that. Um, the next phase, as you'll recall from the, uh, proposal in June, um, was, uh, two additional, uh, refurbishments for twenty twenty-three. Two new fire engines to replace, uh, two out of the fleet that need to go to surplus that are at end of life. And then, uh, the additional ladder truck as well. And so you'll see that that total is four point six million dollars. In addition to that, in, in discussions with fleet, um, you'll recall that in last year's budget process in twenty twenty-two, we did the same thing with our, uh, transport units or aid cars and medic units. And so what that looks like is, uh, five hundred and forty-one, uh, thousand dollars. That'll be two additional new uh, medic units for next year. Um, and just as a reminder, um, the, uh, there's an addition there, uh, two of those, uh, as we, uh, discussed last year would be four-wheel drive. Um, we deferred ordering those two in twenty twenty-two because we couldn't get the chassis. And so we're hopeful that next year they'll be able to get those chassis. So the price is, uh, about, uh, thirty thousand dollars more uh, for the upgrade with the four, four-wheel drive components. Um, and then finally, um, the, uh, bottom note here, you'll see the bullet point, um, the non-fire engine ladder and paramedic unit. So pool vehicles and staff vehicles and such, we're still working on a needs assessment on those. Um, we've got a lot of aging fleet in that quarter category as well. And so each of the divisions is looking at, uh, the current age and, uh, state of, uh, uh, repair and costs and all of that. So, um, that we can make an assessment on that as well. And we will be bringing that forward later. Um, just a, a reminder, um, that for twenty twenty-four, um, as I look at the, uh, decision package from the twenty twenty-two budget, looks like we'll have one additional medic unit and, uh, three refurbishments, uh, or remounts, excuse me, on medic units. Um, and then in the off years, it'd be one additional new engine, uh, and two more refurbishments in twenty twenty-four. Just as a reminder of the, the whole catch-up package that was discussed back in June and last year in the budget process for twenty twenty-two. Thanks, Chris.
All right. Thank you. All right. So for next steps on September first, um, we're going to back, bring back the results of the status quo budget. And so then at that meeting, we will marry the revenue forecast with the expenditure forecast. And then we'll also start talking about discretionary budget requests that have been submitted by divisions, uh, to the chief for consideration. On September thirteenth, we have, uh, scheduled a continuation of the discussion of discretionary budget requests. And then on October fourth is the presentation of the chief's preliminary budget. Uh, and after that, it goes to the Board of Commissioners for your budget deliberations. So I'm going to unshare this and uh, see if there's any questions.
Commissioner Chan?
Yeah. Thank you for doing the work in here. I, I'm a column guy. Is anywhere you can line up the column from prior year budget? Smiling, laughing, ready, uh, without, uh, and then also the new one. The, the, your forecast, then I can take a look at percentages and all that and the, the increase and decrease and also, um, and then you add up the Mill Creek, kind of a, you're projecting what the Mill Creek is. So I can, it's a big picture of me. Can, can take a look at that to total with that type of thing. That would be really helpful to me.
Definitely. Commissioner Chan, that we'll definitely do that. And as we get a little further with this data and, and our confidence increases in some of these numbers, we'll, we'll provide more data and I, I, I agree, the comparative format would be really helpful too. So I'll make sure that we get that incorporated into the documents too.
Yeah, just, I mean, even big, big, big number, I, I, you know, we don't really detail, but at least conceptually, I know what the parameters are. So I can easily work in, in my head. Thank you.
Commissioner Tia Block?
In the packet, there's a memo that, uh, breaks down the different categories of expenses. And, uh, one of them is intergovernmental, going from two hundred thousand to seventy-five thousand. And then just wanted to know, uh, if you can kind of define what intergovernmental means.
Absolutely. It's, it's actually, I should have changed the label on that. It's elections. So, uh, the budget in the previous year had, had a lot in there. Uh, we have three seats up, I think, in that will be funding in twenty twenty-three for elect. So elections will bill us for that. And the cost was between seventy and seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, last, last go around. So I think the county is probably going to have a similar bill for us. If we end up putting something else in the ballot, uh, we'll probably have to bring a budget amendment, uh, with that. If, if there was something else that we were going to take to voters, but we know those three, three seats are up. So that's why that, that money's in there.
Gotcha, gotcha. And then for, uh, miscellaneous, can you give some examples of what that might, might be or some big ones there?
Uh, you know, miscellaneous is kind of a catch-all. So there's, there's a lot of, uh, IT spend ends up in there. Um, there's, there's just a lot of kind of weird stuff in there. I can, I can, uh, put together an example or some examples and send those to the chief to, to the commissioners, um, if that'd be helpful, but I don't want to risk misspeaking about what exactly is in there.
I guess if there's just something like really big, um, that's important to me, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Todd?
Yeah, thank you. I'm new to this, but I think, uh, Mr. Fairnhoff was also new to this. Have, have you already gone through the revenue side or is that coming or is it an overall budget schedule? Can you help me catch up? I guess what I'm looking for, I don't have to do it tonight. Is there a kind of a way for us to get those two newbies to catch up with the process here?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that. I, I guess this is the, uh, you're relatively new to this process for us. We do have an adopted budget calendar. So the revenue forecast was, uh, presented in July, uh, and we can redistribute those materials to the, to the two of you as well. Um, the, so we have the, uh, so this would be obviously the expenditure forecast. Uh, status quo budget will be next time. That'll be September first. So we'll put, we'll, we'll talk about the, there's going to be a gap. Uh, you know, inflation is higher than, than, uh, our, our revenue forecast supports with revenues, uh, assuming the same revenue mix as twenty twenty-two. So we'll have a conversation about that during the revenue, uh, the revenue forecast. We talked about the, uh, revenue capacity options as well. So some levers that we could pull to raise additional revenues that aren't in the current revenue mix or like things like bank capacity that as a former council member, you might be familiar with. Uh, so, so that's in those materials as well. Um, when we talk about the discussion or discretionary budget request that divisions are making to the chief now, uh, the, the chief is going to call those, uh, not everything that, that gets requested from divisions are going to come forward for consideration or for discussion with the board. Um, but the idea there is just to kind of float some of those ideas and see what the board's interested in in terms of what should make it into the chief's preliminary budget. Uh, the chief will hand over his budget on October first, um, which I don't recall if, you know, if your, your experience, I know is with Mill Creek and I, I don't recall if you all are a strong mayor or a, uh, city administrator, but it would be either the mayor's budget or the, the city manager's budget. That's the equivalent step. And then after that, it really becomes, uh, the board of commissioners budget and we'll, we're just going to be in a more supporting role, uh, for those budget deliberations. Uh, and I think we're scheduled to adopt or, uh, the last meeting or the second to last meeting before Thanksgiving. So.
Good. Thanks for that override. Yeah, we're, we're a weak mayor. I've been there, done that. So thanks. The, the second question was, I assume that when you're in your overall salary numbers, you've got wrapped in there station seventy-six people or is that in a separate category?
So the overall increases will apply to those folks as well. Uh, they're going to be part of the contract. Uh, we do have, so, so just to keep it, so it wasn't distorted, we didn't add the additional. There's, there's also some additional, uh, uh, positions associated with the additional transport unit at, uh, in Edmonds. So we didn't put those in there because it's, it's really, it, it would be distortive to add. It would have showed an increase that was probably closer to twenty percent, which is a little disingenuous because there's revenue associated with those, uh, the, those additional positions as well. So those are not included, but they will be in, obviously in the chief's preliminary budget.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner Kenny?
Yeah, Mr. Bothwell, I wanted to ask about the, um, healthcare and the, uh, total amount, I think you indicated eight percent increase. And, uh, I was curious if that's subject, subject to change or you could talk a little bit more about why the eight percent?
That's a great question. So that's the model it's been used. Uh, it's been, it's been a reasonable number through, like, I just looked back through the history to see if that that number has, has been adequate. Uh, it's built up just a little bit of fund balance enough that I think it, it makes sense to be comfortable with that number. Uh, moving forward, we have a requirement to keep sixteen weeks of fund balance to support the self-insurance plan. And we have something like thirty weeks. So we've got enough of a cushion in there, I think, to, even though we're in a high inflation environment, eight percent might sound a little low. Uh, I think there's enough cushion there to roll that forward and, and see how it goes. Uh, I reached out to our, to, to the third-party administrator that manages our plan too, to see if they had any forecasts and they really don't. Uh, we kind of work a year behind for those forecasts or for, for that data. So we won't really have any better data, uh, to update the model until next year about this year, if that makes any sense. And that's, I, I think that's why the, the fund, having a healthy fund balance, uh, for the self-insurance plan, uh, makes a lot of sense and kind of gives us some comfort with rolling that eight percent forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, CFO Bothwell, for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. We will go on to, uh, section ten, new business. South County Fire twenty twenty SAO Audit and Exit Conference for discussion again with CFO Bothwell and Chief Hovis.
All right. It's me again. Uh, so the twenty twenty audit just recently wrapped up and you heard that, right? It's twenty twenty audit. Uh, so it was wrapping up when I got here. I don't have a ton of history with it, but the audit report was clean, which is the desired, uh, clean with respect to the, uh, fair presentation of the financial statements. Uh, that's the desired outcome. Uh, as always, the auditor's left with some exit recommendations. That's a standard, always happens. Uh, but we also got a management letter, uh, which is the next level of reporting, uh, indicating it's a slightly more serious issue. Um, we've reviewed those as staff and, uh, and reviewed those with the auditors. I think we know what they're looking for. Uh, and so we will look to remedy those items kind of in the off season before they come back. Uh, there's no, I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't appear at this point that we're going to need any additional resources or anything to do that. I think we could just handle those, those items administratively. Um, and so we'll look forward to the auditors coming back and uh, being satisfied with, with our response to those items. So uh, otherwise the audited financial statements have been published. Uh, they're out there for the public and, uh, welcome any questions.
Do we have any questions for CFO? Do we have any questions for CFO Bothwell on this topic? Mr. Todd. Oh, you're on mute.
Sorry, if this is the this is not customary protocol, sorry about that, but but uh CFO Bothwell is also early, also new to this. It sounds like you inherited some of this. You don't know exactly what went on before, but you your statement was you don't need more resources to deal with the management letter. But is it reasonable to just give us a real short summary of what that is and how we're gonna get caught up and can we do that for twenty twenty one or is it one of those that you? The horse is already out of the bound, born, born, you gotta wait till twenty twenty to fix processes or procedures that might have been out of whack.
So great, great question. Thank you for that. The um so. The issues are, so it's it's a management letter that was actually issued uh for a previous audit. Uh and it's about the safekeeping or the safekeeping of uh of assets, so some capital assets. There's been no loss associated with those assets. There's no, there's no significant issue, but our processes were found to not be necessarily. Uh imperfect compliance with with some of the standards, particularly about reporting uh for things that are taken off the books. Uh and so it's, I think that we can, we can handle it administratively by just tightening up our policies uh and and some of our practices. The RFA, the the auditors did recognize that the RFA made a lot of progress on this issue. Uh and some of the assets came in from District One and there was just, there's a lot going on. Uh I think we're in a much better position to deal with it this time. Um there's also an asset tracking system that's being put in place. Uh and so I think just, you know, finishing the process to get the assets uh tracking uh project done. Uh getting the right policies in place and then just uh more monitoring maybe than we were doing in the past. Um I think we're gonna be able to get there, no problem. We the the board uh recently approved a additional position for uh the finance department or a division. Which is going to help tremendously. Uh I'm not sure that that. I would be able to be as confident that we would be able to resolve this before they came back without that addition. Uh but but based on that position, I think that there's, I have total confidence that we're gonna be able to remedy this.
It's it sounds to me like so we would not, I think we should assume it may not be a surprise. To have the twenty twenty one audit also uncover the tail end of this. Because now it's twenty twenty two, you're doing things different now. You may still get stuck with some of this, but I don't think that's. I don't think that's gonna be alarming to any of us. And I'm glad you're getting this place before you take on one more pile of assets from. From Surfers, you take on Mill Creek. So I think you're gonna have a clean system. Hopefully we'll count. How many barka loungers you've got and properly asset tag them when they come over and stuff like that. I know the chief is is already gives one of our lounge or lounge, so. We'll make sure that gets properly moved where reasonably soon. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other questions, we'll move on to item eleven, committee updates. Board bylaws with Vice Chair Roland.
Um yes, uh we will be meeting with the three more free parliamentarian candidates on uh Thursday. Uh to decide uh who to go with there or who came to the board to uh to uh recommend. Um and then we'll we'll we get into work.
Thank you. And then on to committee updates for regionalization, intergovernmental appointment. Um Michael, Commissioner Farinoff, are you still with us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can, thank you. Uh I appoint you to the third seat on this committee. So you'll be there with Commissioner Chan and Vice Chair Roland.
Very fine, thank you.
Well. Uh I understand that there's a meeting later this month and that somebody will be reaching out to you.
I hope so. That'll be great.
It's a remote meeting, so you can take it from wherever. You don't have to show up in person at HQ.
Outstanding.
Commissioner comments? Any commissioners wish to make any comments? Commissioner Chan.
Yes, I actually, uh one of my. One of my cousin's son. Uh he ever since in high school, he wanted to be a fireman paramedic. And now he's thirty two years old. He finally got. Got enrolled, got got uh working for San San Yandro Fire Department, for those who know, it's south of Oakland. Uh I'm really happy for him. Uh just quick stories, basically, we're gonna talk about that. Uh Asian family left him to be doctor and nurses and or or anything like that. I think. Chief Hovis and I had this conversation. Uh but this son just determined he gone through. His own E M T classes, paramedic and work for private ambulance and all that stuff. Uh I the 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 understanding is that it's difficult for someone who had. The dad and no uncle and that type of thing. There's no relationship with them. Uh like you're not even in California, it's it's who you know it, what and what and what you know. So it's kind of reflect on us. I really want to make sure that we have a reopen. You know, uh selection, I assume that Chief Hovis has no, not just in the firefighter paramedic, but in any position. We are a public company. Uh we we really need to be, even the reception is everything out, we should really open up so that people. Don't have connection, don't know anyone can even come to work with us. Uh I'm happy. Per- perseverance. I think that's the key thing. If you, something you want to do, even your family was every support, but now the family re-supported of that and and I'm just happy.
Thank you, Commissioner Chan. Any other commissioners? All right, um the firefighter retirement ceremony coming up on Friday. Chief Hovis, do you want to speak a little further to that?
Uh I certainly can. Chair and Commissioners and Commissioner Chan, uh thank you for uh the work you recently. Did with uh Asian American Television, um highlighting Captain Jew this week and also. What was produced and aired about our recruits at the academy. So I really appreciate um your support of that and you didn't mention that. So I wanted to make sure. I I touched on that, but to get to the question asked chair, so I A F local eighteen twenty eight. Uh has historically had retirement ceremony with the South County Fire only one time. Before uh covid. So there was a brief ceremony across the street at Station Eleven where a number of people were honored. And in previous years before that, um they would, you know, we'd have people maybe retire at a fire station. And it wasn't, I guess, a a big event like what we have uh in store. So. Uh our honor guard is going to be there. It's a joint uh event and it's gonna be at the Edmunds Center for the Arts. It's essentially a catch-up retirement ceremony that will have about thirty five plus people have been invited. There's a number of people that have moved out of state. Uh for example, firefighter Scott Hamilton, that's now in Idaho. There's some people that aren't gonna be able to attend the event, but uh one of the people uh um honored to be able to get his flag. Handed uh by me that was flown over headquarters and this is really the tradition. So. At all of these retirees, there's a flag that flies over the last station or at headquarters. And then they get a ceremonial axe from the local. Um it's a, it's a big event. So anyway, that that one person is Chief Doll. That was interim chief after Chief Stedman left and then uh was made fire chief at the last board meeting that he attended, I believe, when Commissioner Kenny was was chair. So he's gonna be there. Uh Assistant Chief Weber is not gonna be able to make it, but it's a long list and very pleased to uh. Um have the support of President Hoover, who's uh not here and Vice President Moore. That the local wants to have this event, make sure that the commissioners are know about it. Um all of our current partner contract cities as well as the city of Mill Creek and city of Linwood uh leadership has been informed. Just to notify those partners as well. Um it will be livestreamed. If uh commissioners cannot attend or other members of the public, but it's gonna be a a great event. I will keep my. Opening comments to two minutes or less, which is probably at three minutes just talking about this. But for you know, uh commissioners that have been here for a while or for the the three that just joined. This year and liaison Todd, uh we've come, we've come a long way since the formation of this uh RFA. And Chief Stedman being here as our first chief to get to the point where uh we've got some great things going, some great alignment and uh. Welcome to New City recently. So just want to throw that out there. So thanks for asking the question and um. Melissa, I don't know if you had an opportunity to email this all out to the commission. I know you've been very busy, but anyway.
No, I didn't.
Okay, if there's any questions, I could certainly uh take them.
I have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
What's the timeframe, like nine AM to noon?
Sorry, doors doors open at nine. The event will start at nine thirty and with my two minutes of talking, we just need to get through a little bit of comments from, I think. Vice President Moore, because President Hoover will be uh on a the a trip and uh. So uh fight VP Moore can keep it down to maybe five minutes. Uh we just have to go through the the pomp and circumstance of making sure that everybody is is recognized. So it says uh at least until one o'clock, but it certainly should not take that long. So I, you know, hard to guess. We've never had one this big. Or not, we haven't had a catch-up, you know, kind of a ceremony like this. And uh there is some people that missed the last one that are gonna be present. Um that retired in twenty eighteen as well. So I'd say strap in for about an hour and a half. That's probably the duration that.
So is it this coming Friday?
Yes, sir. Nine, this this coming Friday.
And around nine o'clock started, okay?
Nine o'clock, the doors will open. The ceremony should start at nine thirty.
So what happened to the, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
So you you also mentioned about admins. What is that admins thing?
So the location where this is gonna be at, because there's so many people. That are you were honoring is it's gonna be at the Edmunds Center for the Arts. And if you're not familiar with that, that was the old original Edmunds Junior High and High School. That's in downtown Edmunds that has been all refurbished and it's a beautiful venue. I believe it seats seven hundred. People in that uh that's total space. They do a lot of concerts there, but by fire station seventeen, if that helps downtown.
So so it's not in fire. You you mentioned. Station eleven, that was in the past.
Yes, yes, sir. The last time we did this when Chief Ball was here, yeah.
Yeah, I remember that. That that was a great, great ceremony. I encouraging our commission to go, yeah, okay.
Thank you. Yeah, uh better acoustics and seating instead of standing at Station Eleven in front of rigs. That's so it's a, it's a neat venue, so.
If you want to give a address, uh can send it through to Melissa so we can get the address, okay?
Should be in the invite and the attachment of the email that has the address there.
All right.
Yes, sir.
But Station Eleven has Goddard Field right next door that you can sit down at, right?
Yes, yeah, it works out pretty good. I don't think it's gonna rain on Friday, but the sun will would be in everybody's eyes. This is an air-conditioned facility and you've been. So maybe like, maybe the intent will be to move it around in the future. I'm just happy that we're able to do something and honor these. Retirees and there's probably not a lot of people left in on this meeting, but with an accumulated uh years of service, well over seven hundred and fifty all combined, including someone here that. Uh just recently retired with forty two years of service. So I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you very much for that, Chief Hovis.
Thank you.
Can we just have all the board members that wish to go, commissioners, please RSVP to Melissa as the focal point and then she can pass that along. Um Melissa, what time do you want to be RSVP'd by Thursday night by five? Okay, so if we're gonna have feedback to her by Thursday night by five, if you plan to attend, so we can pass along the names. And then um. That's a wrap, since nobody else has any other comments. I adjourn the meeting. Thank you.